I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undaunted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I guess the first thing is to approve the agenda. So if anyone has any changes, additions, or questions to the agenda as presented?
Make the motion to approve this.
I got a motion by Dave Bruchek, seconded by Kay Wilcox, to approve the agenda as presented. There's no other comments. Home in favor say aye. Aye in the opposition? Okay, agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we're very fortunate to have Mike Shdika and Jerry Ponbuck here from the baseball committee. Those two along with Jerry Valerius were the spearheaders of the, if that's even a word, spearheaders, but they did all the dirty work in the renovation process of the ball field and actually did a lot of the work at the state tournament, which was very successful. They're here today to kind of give us a recap.
Yes, thank you. So Mike Johnson asked if myself and Jerry and/or Jerry Valerius could be here tonight to kind of give you guys a recap of the renovation project and also the state tournament and how everything kind of turned out in the end. And so that's what we have here tonight. And so without further ado, this all kind of began back in 2013. That's when Jerry Planbeck and others secured the 2018 state tournament. And from that point forward, kind of began a lot of moving parts, if you will. We began to talk about the improvements that may need to take place at the ballpark. And that quickly turned into us securing Brian Jirdy and ISG to begin looking at possible ways to improve the ballpark. From there, City and Prairie officials, folks from the baseball groups and ISG began meeting to begin discussing whether it's small changes or big changes. And it was really a group effort over almost four years in the end, meeting for six weeks to begin planning. And from those plans, we realized that the ballpark needed some major improvements or renovations. And in February 2015, the council at that point in time agreed to a three-year phased improvement plan. Those three phases took place in '15, '16, and '17. And those items are all listed there on the screen. And a lot of those things culminated in 2017, but also kind of finished up in 2018 as some final tweaks were made at the state tournament. So really, the ballpark had major transformation. Some of the things became all new, some things were tweaked or improved upon, some things were changed into a better orientation or better outcome we were to begin with. So all those projects are up there on the screen. To pay for all these things, many different groups are involved, including the City and Prairie, obviously, New Prairie Area Schools, New Prairie Utilities Commission, New Prairie Orioles Baseball Group, Youth Baseball Association, and our baseball committee. And up until this point in time, from what we're aware, all payments remain on track or have been paid. Some of those groups that are on the screen agreed to like a seven-year payback on what they agreed to pay. So some of those groups are still paying, but I think everyone is on schedule. In the fall of 2015, the New Prairie Baseball Committee decided to start a capital campaign. And our goal was to raise about $150,000. And as of this summer, we reached about 94% of the goal, so about $141,000. We were pretty pleased in that. Our goal was actually more than what we agreed to fund with the city council that year in '15. So I believe that we're able to adhere to our goal, what we agreed to pay with the council. Also, we agreed to pay $25,000 from the profits from the state tournament 2018 to the city as well to fulfill part of the funding agreement that we made in 2015. As you can see, meeting that goal, we had a tremendous outcome from our business community, individuals and families who became involved in that capital campaign. All the donors that took part in that campaign and other fundraising efforts are now on a plaque wall at the ballpark, on the, what is it, the west wall of the concession stands. That's a very beautiful plaque to commemorate all of us who paid for the funding. And then also, as we developed changes to the ballpark, we now have different things or revenue streams to pay for a future tournament, such as the scoreboard, which has advertisements on it. And we also have some backstop kneeball advertisements. So the ballpark now has some additional revenue streams for itself to fund future needs or future desires and make future changes. 2018 state tournament, that happened in August and the first part of September. It was a huge undertaking. It's pretty much what the ballpark, I think, was renovated to help with. It wasn't the only impetus for the improvements, but this was kind of our goal to have things in place for this tournament. We had awesome partnerships towards with not only the council, but different city groups and different city workers. Glenn and his teams were absolutely tremendous in helping us get things done at the ballpark. So kudos to those guys to get not only the ballpark itself, but the surrounding areas in immaculate shape. All 29 games that were scheduled to be in the parade were played in the parade. So the weather was really good. We had some rain scares, if you will, but the only real rain that came was on the last day, on the last game. So we were greatly pleased with the rain that held off. The third blow there is that we had over 500 unique volunteers that worked either one shift or multiple shifts. So that's just a tremendous outpouring of support from this community in this area. Walking into the state tournament as began planned, if you would have said we'd have 500 people come forward to help, I would have said you're crazy. But we had 500 people step forward. It goes to this community, just for some background, I think Shakopee had roughly 300 volunteers. So we just, we really blew out a lot. So we're very pleased there. Our tournament attendance was around 17,349. I shouldn't say around, that's exactly what it was. In New Prairie, Jordan, and Shakopee. And that's the highest since 1960. 1960 is out of Springfield. And we had the most since then. Previous to our tournament, the most was 17,346 in Chaska, Hamburg. So we were very pleased to see that. And obviously, we got some very positive feedback from the players, fans, and the baseball board of directors that New Prairie, Shakopee, and Jordan were excellent sites, excellent volunteers, and the ballpark set up well for the tournament. And the last blow there is our group profited around $58,000, of which $25,000 went to the state for our agreement. And the remainder will go into a fund for future improvements at the ballpark. And a newly formed or kind of a somewhat edited group of our committee will continue to move forward, working with the city to manage that fund and manage any more improvements in the future. So $58,000, that's roughly half of what the overall tournament made. We split profits with Shakopee. And then each site has some small expenses that they may have to individualize. So we made $58,000. Shakopee, I think, somewhere that same, that same as well. Just as I wrap up here a little bit, here's kind of a floor picture of the ballpark. It's kind of just a general shot. And here's one from the governing night. I think this was as the Orioles were kind of heading up the field to play their games. So just some major changes occurred on the left-hand side in our grandstand. I'm sorry, our concession stand in the restroom building is new. New dugouts, new concrete plaza areas, improved lighting, light poles instead of light stations near first and third base. The check, that kind of the pride of the folks in this renovation committee, to house different fans on third base area. New press box as well, and some grandstand improvements, bullpen improvements, scoreboard improvements. So really, a holistic view of all the improvements that took place. So finally, again, thanks to our community, the City and Prairie, the mayor and the city council, Mike Johnson, Glenn Shdika, Jim Calagieri, Patty Solai, Ken Hondich, Maderinda, and many, many others who helped, and also to the baseball groups, and especially to Brian Jirdy and ISG. Without their help and hesitation, we would not have been able to do what we did. So, thank you.
Awesome. Very good job on the tournament and the field. I know it's going to be a field that's going to be maintained and one in the future. And I think it's going to be one of the finest fields in the area. And maybe in the near future, we'll be hosting another event. I'm sure you've signed on the board already, Mike, but...
Yeah, we can only host every five years. And we'll take a little break for now. We also, we got the $25,000 check. If you want to, Jerry just wanted to bring that forward and give it to the council.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, you guys. I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing your work.
Good job, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thanks for my new friend.
For the start of the process.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Those places have big checks. We go with the small ones.
Thanks, man.
Again, I think that the state baseball tournament renovations really showed how community can come together and put a facility and tournament on like that. Those two gentlemen who snuck out of here were very instrumental in that. So. Next on the agenda, an item that we kind of shelved a little bit on the last council meeting regarding the municipal consent. And we address that. And Chris, you're going to take it down?
Well, thank you. Mayor members of the city council, again, as the mayor mentioned, your consideration here is this is the request for some municipal consent. This item was tabled at the last meeting to allow staff and the project management team to bring some additional information back regarding some of the access closures. I do want to point out, basically, that again, that this is approval, the final layout. The final layout is exactly the sheet that you see hanging up on the wall. This is really the kind of the geometric base information under which the final plans will be prepared. Final plans right now are not even quite at 60% right now. We have a process we go through with MINDOT. We bring them up to 60%. You submit them, they go through review, comments, and then they go on to next stages before we eventually get to final. So again, just to keep in mind, we're not quite to 60%. Municipal consent again is required because there is a small amount of right-of-way acquisition that's needed. It's basically the corners up on Columbus Avenue by the church and H&R Block, a small bit of space there. But also because of the proposed access closures, that we'll get into a little more detail. Before I jump into that, I do want to jump a little ahead and talk a little bit about ADA, some of the ADA stuff. I know there's some questions about ADA design and the process we go through. And it's actually quite detailed going through the ADA design. The obvious is the pedestrian ramps. Those are items that standards become more specific and better designs for. But the ADA designs go way beyond that. It's cross slopes on sidewalks. It's looking at parking spaces. There was a question on whether or not there'll be handicapped spaces with this project. And yes, there will. Based on the number of stalls that are, that will be marked out there, there are six required handicap spaces, and one of which will need to be man-accessible. They have, from a plan view, from kind of an overhead view, we've looked at where logical spots where those will be. But we're waiting to tell the vertical designs and done to figure out where is the best spots. Because you want to put them in a spot where water isn't necessarily draining, too, high locations, things like that. So a lot of those details we're working through as we go from 60% plans to not to 90% plans. We'll look at those in further detail. The process MINDOT goes through too, when you talk about ADA is, we did what we call ADA walk. We did an ADA walk, factor in preliminary design, and again, just before we started the final design. MINDOT has a functional group called the ADA group that basically helped provide assistance and guidance. In fact, the individual that went on both of those walks with us, Todd Grugel is in a wheelchair, and he brings out ideas, things to consider, why we do what we do. And they are part of the review process when we go through plans like that. Oh, yeah, I guess I, yeah, we had a slide here. This is, of course, we did the first ADA walk. I think it was in, definitely it was really cold. But we went up and down the corridor, looked at business and building accesses. You know, under this design, we will do the best we can. There are some areas where a lot of like locations, for example, this is the Prairie Pond Wine Cafe entrance, where a lot of those areas, the slopes in are somewhat steep. There are some things we can do during the design if we can get the street to fit. We'll design those entrances so that they're better and hopefully in compliance with ADA. But really, a lot of those entrances are private issues. We'll do the best we can to make some of those locations better, but there's some that we'll just won't be able to address. For example, there's some buildings with steps into the buildings, and those again are good. Then have to be private improvements that individuals have to deal with on a later case. But again, we're doing what we can, number one, making sure the corridor is ADA accessible and slopes are good. And if there are a few locations where we can make improvements that help those entrances, we'll do that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Kudron and Brett Posh here in a sec to talk about the process that MINDOT and the design team goes through regarding the accesses, decisions, and things that are made. But I'd rather beat around the bush than kind of get right to the point. The project management team did go back and re-review these. Again, you saw the information on the access closures in your packet. We did specifically look at the three that were in question. And in addition to that, a MINDOT planning team, independent of this group, did review all 11 here recently. And I think that information was provided in the packet as well. But in the end, the project management team, the project team, which includes city staff, SEH, as well as the MINDOT reps, we do still stand by our recommendation on the access closures as proposed in the report. Just again, remind everybody, this is a City and Project, again, fighting cooperation with MINDOT. Obviously, it's a Trump highway that's going through the project. So I'm going to turn it over to Glenn and Brett to go over some of the processes as part of the decisions on access closures. Then followed up with that, Nikki is going to talk specifically on those three that you all had questions on.
Thank you, Chris. Figure out how to run this mouse here.
Listen right on the black one.
All right, looks like that worked. All right, my name is Glenn Kudron. I'm a project manager in MINDOT. I'm in Kato. Been working with Nikki, Chris, and the rest of our project team here from New Prairie on this reconstruction project. But Nikki mentioned at the last meeting how this project come to be initially back in 2013, early January, February, we sent a note to the city negating we were going to be doing some mill and overlay work through town. In response to that, the city contacted me and said, no, maybe that's not quite the right application for this project. Maybe we need to look at long-term fixes here. We got utilities that are in poor shape, over 100 years old, as Nikki mentioned in the last slide from the last meeting. So let's take a look, take a step back. Part of any mill and overlay project, we are still required to do the ADA work. So that, as Chris mentioned, is still going to be part of this project. But it's really now evolved into a full reconstruction project. So that involves taking a look at each individual piece of this project more detailed, more thorough, and not just a surface treatment project. Then October of 2016, a joint powers agreement was crafted between MINDOT and the city of New Prairie. That allows for MINDOT to pay the city for New Prairie to other consultant design this project. So that's a little bit about what the joint powers agreement is, how that payment's being made back to the city. Full reconstruction project includes a comprehensive review of all the project features. And so that, what does that include? We have to balance between funding, all the different project constraints that we have, the existing elevations in front of buildings, and what existing infrastructures are there that we cannot move, work within the existing right-of-way, essentially rebuild the whole road network through town. As part of that, I've had the opportunity to be part of all of the stakeholder interactions that have happened throughout the course of this project, initially beginning back in February of 2017. We've had multiple meetings. Kay's been involved in that from the council level. There's a lot of interaction that went in through the decision making to get to the layout that you see on the wall. We have to work, obviously, with you as the city of New Prairie, but as MINDOT, we also have many other outside stakeholders that we have to answer to and address their concerns. Examples of those would be freight mobility, emergency services, roadway users, FHWA, ADA. So there's a lot of different stakeholders within our project itself that, outside of the city, that we have to work with directly as well, trying to address as part of a project. As I said, reports all elements on a project are reviewed. I mean, the initial part that stands out is the pavement condition. That's the part that everybody drives on, it's a road rough. That's usually what drives most projects initially. From there, it gets expanded to, well, is the intersection control adequate? You start getting into a full reconstruct, we're looking at all the different facets of this project. So it's not just what you see when you drive your car, it's how does that road interact with the vehicle traffic, drainage, what's happening below the roadway surface, how we get in the waterway. Not to mention city utilities, sewer, water, storms, where all those need to be looked at. Then last but not least, we start looking at commercial and residential access. If we don't get the opportunity to build a new roadway every day, this is, if you think about this as building a brand-new road, a clean slate, essentially starting from the new, say, well, what items can we work with, what items can we tailor to better fit the roadway design? So that's where access comes in. There are areas where we can minimize potential crashes, not only to vehicles, but to gas screens, and what's the usability of that facility going to be when we're done and we walk away. If you don't get this chance to do this every day, it's maybe once in 50 years at best. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brett. He's going to talk a little more about accesses and how we, how we'll get reviews through the process.
Thanks, Glenn. As Glenn said, I'm Brett Posh. I am the district attorney for District 7. So I want to take a little bit of a step back and talk about the picture stuff. About 15 years ago, we started our Toward Zero Death Coalition. It's a group of the 4E's, now 5E's, engineers, law enforcement, emergency services, educators, and the last one, I see is everybody. But a multi-dimensional group that tried to look at how do we get after our vehicle crashes. And in those 15 years, we've gotten annual fatalities on Minnesota roadways from about 650 down to about 350. The reason they're called Toward Zero Death is because that's how many are really socially acceptable, right? I mean, we make a collective decision that we're okay with some people getting hurt, but nobody's ever volunteering their family to be the one that gets hurt, right? So this group comes together. We have meetings, there's meetings in some regions across the state, across the four districts. We look at what can we do in each of our focus areas to help get that numbers down. And we've had really good success. 15 years ago, 650. Today, around 350. But there's two areas where we haven't really made a whole lot of progress on. One is pedestrians, the other is motorcycles. So for regular cars, there's been some great things that have happened. Cars now have airbags and stability control, analog brakes. We have new intersection treatments, roundabouts, reduce conflict intersections that prevent the worst kind of vehicular crashes from occurring. But with pedestrians, we haven't seen those same drop numbers. Part of that's just a function of physics. A 4,000-pound vehicle versus a, even a large person, 200-pound person vehicle is always going to win. So when we come to projects, we look very closely at what can we do to help improve that. 92% of head crashes last year were in urban areas over 5,000. So it's a big compliment. It's one that we're just, we're just starting to tackle. Just about 80% for those vehicles moving forward for head fatalities. And 30% of all pedestrian crashes involve the vehicle turning. So this... This one?
This one.
Over to that. Okay. So this chart shows here, this is something that, bottom axis on your right is your access density per mile. The vertical axis is your crash rate, your crashes per million vehicle miles traveled. We use that per million vehicle miles traveled. This has a way, but a busy road, on par with a less busy road. But what it shows is that predictably, the more accesses you have along a roadway, the more crashes you have. There's a big, long NCHRP report, which if you want, it's a good bedtime reading material to put you to sleep on accesses. But following that with each additional access along the roadway, you get a 4% increase in crash potential. So that's what's happening, but why is it happening? The figure on your left is what we call conflict points. And this is primarily looking at vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points. But what it says is for a regular, just regular conventional road, two-minute intersection, there's 24 ways where two vehicles can try to occupy the same spot at the same point in time to cause a crash. Our access management manual is also, looks at intersection functional areas and really tries to get any kind of access away from those intersection functional areas. So if you can imagine all those conflict points that you see on the left, when you introduce a driveway near that intersection, you introduce a whole other set of possible conflict points in that same proximity. So we have access policy. And it's, sometimes it's about balancing needs. So respecting the legal rights of abiding property owners, that's one goal. But we also have to preserve the safety and mobility of Trump Highway system. So key words there are abiding property owners, our title to reasonably convenient and suitable access to the Trump Highway system. But access to the local streets system is generally preferred as it's most conducive to safety and mobility. Those are from the access management manual, link on the bottom there. There are many benefits to proper access management. There's, we have a whole bunch to share online. This just goes to some of the highlights of reduced delay, better pedestrian accommodation. Talk a little bit about our process when it comes to projects. So as Glenn said, when a project is, its scope depending upon the length and duration of the fix, kind of gauges how aggressive we are with looking at accesses. So short-term project, usually we're going after the worst ones. I got a project on a different road, and there's 180-foot bike drive. We are going to do something with that access because it's just, it's wide enough to park two semis in back to back. Medium, medium-term project, then we start to take a little bit closer look. We look at, okay, could these, this one new driveway, is it really necessary? Maybe there's more accesses to a field, and they've got a couple off of the township or county road. Okay, maybe we can pull back some of those. And then a long-term project, then we get off the microvine by, so we look, remove redundant ones, sometimes try to rein in those splits. sometimes try to rein in those splits a little bit. If we can get two property owners who are agreeable with each other, they're good neighbors, maybe we can get them to share one combined accesses. I'm taking a pretty close look at, at each of every ones. So the access committee has got five standing members. There's roadway designers, these are folks who run, who do actual roadway design and look at the geometrics of how wide an access needs to be in relation to, to how wide the shoulder is, how wide the roadway is. You have folks like myself who are traffic engineering, who look at safety and operational characters to the roadway. You have transportation planners that look at planning and group development, how that relates with, with Trump highways. You have our land management, our right-of-way folks, who look at what are our legal parcel boundaries and what are the rules concerning transfer of property from state to private to back. And then you have project management as well, which they help guide our processes for what changes are required on a Trump highway. So the committee reviews every new request for a Trump, for a Trump highway access, whether it's redevelopment or a change of use. They review all those requests with that various backgrounds, and they make a, make a decision. In total, I did the math, that's about nineteen years of experience that are, that are on that, on that committee. So average tenure for MINDOT has got to be somewhere around twenty-five years. I'm a new guy with like six years, so we've got very longevity. And then also for projects, they also perform project-specific reviews of corridors, looking at the access. So with that, I just want to go through some examples, just so you can kind of see how we've evaluated accesses, either as part of projects or as individual submissions for parcel redevelopments. This is around the district. So first example here is a, is a fast food, I think it's McDonald's, in the city of Worthington, Trump Highway 59. A little bit, AAT is a fancy engineering term for annualized average daily traffic. And the VPV is vehicles predicted, so nine thousand vehicles per day. So a pretty busy road down in Worthington. This pre-created my time in MINDOT, but I don't know if they ever asked MINDOT for access to the Trump Highway, but when they asked the city, the city told them, looks like you get one. So this is again, a pretty, pretty high-volume facility on a pretty high-volume road. Another one you guys are probably pretty familiar with is, is QuickTrip here in New Prague. Now, to be clear and to be fair, you know, there's some great challenges here to where maybe a request for a Trump Highway access would have been constructible. But I think the answer would have been the same, which was you can actually access off of the local system. And actually, this is a little bit of a, this is one of the preliminary designs. We actually worked with them to push that their southern access a little bit farther north. The reason we did that is so that there's better truck stacking, so that that current driveway doesn't get gummed up as trucks are trying to get on and off, and so the highway needs to be. Another example, this is also from Worthington, so Trump Highway 59. This is a current parties that is being redeveloped into a QuickTrip. And they, they came to the access committee and said, we'd like to redevelop this parcel. And we looked at the volumes that would be generated by a, by a QuickTrip. And we said, oh, boy, that is, I was right within that functional area of the intersection. There's also a chance this intersection could change control type for the next ten years of reconstruction project. So in actually order to redevelop that, they're removing that driveway off of the Trump Highway and on to Grand Avenue. Grand Avenue, as you see to the north there, actually extends up now and continues through. Closer here, this is New Prague. So this was a Dollar General. And the city had constructed a back which opens by booth commerce, not mistaken. Again, requested access to Trump Highway. We said, it's a new site, you've got, you're connected to the corner, corner lot with access, access off of the Montpelot Road. Couple of driveways over in New Rome, this was a larger hotel. A product was coming through, I think it was a minor Fennell and overlay, maybe, it was a milliner, but it wasn't a, wasn't a reconstruction. The site had several accesses to the Trump Highway, including to a couple of major city streets. So in that case, even with a minor project, we removed two Trump Highway accesses. And last example is from this past year in St. James. So St. James came through with a major reconstruction of Highway Four all the way through town. We also looked at the driveways there. The red X you see on the left was a Casey's, Casey's driveway that also had access further down, further to the left on highway floor, and also on the local street, so one of those closed. And then the red X on the right was a corner lot, it was an office building. They had access to the local street and to the Trump Highway, and the Trump Highway access closed. So those are cases that were fairly recent, where when we're coming through with a project, we take a pretty close look at what the existing accesses are. With that, I'll turn it over to Nikki.
So I was going to, took the talk of the three that you requested from last meeting. Let me see if I can get to this. So in your package, we did provide, this fancy house. We did provide information on all eleven that we're talking about. We either closed and actually one access that we're actually adding to the roadway based on our interactions with some of the property owners. But the three that you asked us to look more closely at, the first one I'll come to is 309 Main Street West, so it's Frank's portfolio alley. I will say that I did reach out to Darren this morning and talk to him and did let him know that MINDOT, even though they have reviewed their new individual or independent review, and then also discussions with the PMT, that we are still recommending the closure. I did send him this graphic. So one thing we did is we did look at his parking configuration in the parking lots. And one thing that will benefit is that he will gain a parking stall. And actually, two parking stalls, when you consider that there's one that he uses right now for his snow pile that can case up one of his existing spots. And so we actually are providing a space here that's not usable for parking, but it could be used for his truck to parking. And then he would also gain a spot out on the roadway. His major concern still is just his access actually onto Second, if it's wide enough. And so that's something that the city has discussed with him. And we are going to potentially temporarily close this access before construction in 2020 to see how it operates. And then the city is willing to look at widening that if it does appear that functionally, operationally, it should be wider for him to accommodate all that traffic in that one access point. So that was the first access. The second one I wanted to talk about was the Dyna Realty. I believe there was some discussion at the last meeting about how it would work with that access closed and the parking. There was some discussion of potential need for people to back out onto First Avenue. So I use a computer program that we can actually drive vehicles and have them park and pull out of parking stalls and kind of show that even, you can see with out parking along the building, it's very easy for vehicles to pull out of those stalls and come out face forward onto First. Even if they had people parked here, which were recommended they don't, but if they did, people would still be able to maneuver and come out facing forward out of that area. He would actually be able to park someone in that space that, this is the access today, the existing access that we're talking about closing. So this would actually be a parking stall that could be used. And even if people are parked along this edge, they would still be able to get out and maneuver out as well. We also recommended if needed, that is a snow storage spot because this does drain towards the street. So right now in our design, we're accommodating and understanding that drainage is going to be coming into the street and to collect it, so that could be a spot for some snow storage working as well. And then he would gain, yep, and there would be a spot then from where that access would be going, there'd be an additional spot on the street in front of it. The last one I wanted to talk about is the Carlot. This is one, there's been a little more history with this parcel. So actually, in 2014, he put in for a conditional use permit. At that time, MINDOT did have a review of the parcel, and at that time, they did recommend it being closed. But again, through back and forth, the city and, and it was determined that they would not close it at this time, knowing that this project would probably be coming along. He was notified that they would plan on closing one of his accesses at that point, so he's known in 2014 that this is a potential. I was not able to talk to him today, but I left a message with him today, something that we did talk about at the PMT. Right now, the layout shows his access being adjacent to, so on the very far eastern side of his property, right adjacent to the other property. So there's a residential property that's almost behind him, and they access right along the railroad right-of-way. We did say that it would be possible to move his access, maybe somewhere more in the center of the property, if that's something we'd like to consider. So the location of it is up for consideration right now. But we will warn him that the further he goes west, if there is a roundabout that is put in at this intersection at some point in the future, the further west he goes, the more likelihood it'll turn into a right and right out at that point. So having it at Mill Street, or right across from Mill Street is probably ideal if you want to have full access well into the future. Yeah, and so one of the other benefits that, that we've noticed is you get having that access directly across from this Mill Street, you know, minimizing what Brett had talked about is those conflict points. You know, we're centering them on one intersection. And then if this site were to be redeveloped someday, potentially combined with the one to the north of it, ideally, this is where we want the access in the future as well. So that was the details. Like you said, we did look at the three again, and we had discussions with the PMT. Like I said, we have reached out to the property owners to let them know of the decision. I also let them know of the next steps. And so there is a right-of-way guidebook out there from MINDOT. And so it talks about the potential for reimbursement, to have their own independent appraisal done of their property. And they wanted to consider, they think that they should be compensated for the removal of their access. And so we let them know of kind of that next step of recourse that's available to them.
Any questions? First thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank you all very much. I think this presentation kind of answered, you know, a lot of my questions, the process that I don't think we really had the last time. And I really appreciate what you guys did, explaining the philosophy and, and then all that. So thank you very much for that. With that, anyone in the council have any questions?
Nikki, you provided, I appreciate the due diligence, the added due diligence that you guys all did. And I appreciate the outreach that you did as well. Just a technical point, when you're talking about the Fagie property and the closing that off, and you mentioned snow piles, would the actual drainage occur over the new sidewalk?
Right, and so that's what we're considering right now, is if we could have something on the backside of the sidewalk to hold that water before it goes across the sidewalk, so that's something that's being considered.
So it would go underneath somehow, or?
We might catch it and then move it under, under the sidewalk.
Which it does now.
It does, is that how it works now?
Well, drainage goes across there now.
It goes, right, it goes across, drive, yep, so it goes across the sidewalk today. So that's existing condition, but we're looking at other opportunities for this project to maybe capture it before it crosses the sidewalk.
Is that the only unique location that this would occur, where you'd capture before it is a sidewalk?
No, not necessarily, no. There's a few places where we've got things draining from adjacent properties across sidewalks. So no, it's not unique.
Thank you.
Are you, you indicated that there's a potential for a future access in front of the funeral home?
Right, yep. So what happened there is at the previous project in the nineties, they actually allowed MINDOT to remove the access to that parcel. And so it's the parcel that they just removed the building on, and that's actually its own individual parcel. And so their concern was if they ever wanted to sell that parcel, it would basically be landlocked unless they allowed some kind of access through the funeral home property or from their private residential property on itself. And so MINDOT, you know, we had discussions, and MINDOT has agreed to have a shared site. So it actually would be parallel to their existing property line. They'd have twelve feet on one side and twelve feet on the other side. So they basically would have access to both parcels with one access, but again, paralleling the both sides of that property line.
I'd like to mimic what Chuck just said. This portion that you brought up was very helpful. Regarding the Carlot, I spoke to a guy by the name of Rob Pujacar, who owns the Carlot. And I asked him whether or not was he planning on putting up another building or attaching it to the old building? He says he'd like to, but he doesn't own the property. He did say that he can live with one access opening. So he doesn't have a problem with eliminating one. But there's not much he has to say about it because he doesn't own the property. So it is affecting him very much. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I guess what I will do is make a motion to approve the usual consent final layout.
I'll second it.
I got a second by Dave Bruchek. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, pass is five-zero. Thank you again for all the additional information, it's very helpful. Okay, next on the agenda, the reason we have this on the agenda is at our budget workshop, Councilman Wolf was just wondering how the process of going through the pool, and I guess we kind of agreed that it probably should become a motion that the council makes a resolution closing the outdoor pool, even though we did not fund it in our budget. And we didn't want to make the assumption that people would think that that's how it was handled. So based on those comments from Councilman Wolf, in front of us is a resolution, basically officially closing the outdoor pool. Is that good enough, Ken, or?
Well, not a resolution, but you would be making a motion.
Motion, yeah. Mike Jr. there?
How come they're all laughing?
So, does anyone have any questions or anything? I know Bruce, we kind of talked before the meeting, and he felt this path was, gave you the information.
Yes, thank you. I was coming on new, just trying to understand the history and also what the details. And in the previous council meeting, must have been in February, where you really went into more detail and conversation about it. And my concern was just to close, close the circle and make a clean stop to it. And so the resolution I would anticipate would be to direct city staff to close pool operations and take whatever necessary steps to discontinue joint powers agreement with the school and to take whatever steps necessary to safeguard the property and deal with the building property without the operation of pool. So that would be the motion that I would make.
Okay. So a motion, and second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero. Is Patty taking this next one?
No, I take that one actually, unless Patty really wants it. So why?
But you didn't jump at the opportunity.
So what we have next on the agenda is a resolution of a adopted 2019 city budget as well as the 2019 and 2028 capital improvement plan. Just a real quick overview, this is for all total budget funds totaling $26,389. General fund, you've got proprietary funds that includes water, wastewater, and electric. Non-proprietary funds that include EDA, ambulance, industrial parks. Non-proprietary funds that include EDA, ambulance, industrial park from the EDA, the golf course, and stormwater. Also got in there special revenue capital projects and debt service funds. And obviously, these are the budgets we've been going over through the past few months through budget workshops and through the taxation hearing on December 3rd. So staff would recommend approval of the resolution that adopts the 2019 total budget as well as the 2019 and 2028 capital improvement plan as included in your package.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
I got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Kaye Wilcox. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Passes, it's five zero. Number five, moving right along.
All right, another resolution, this time adopting the 2018 property tax levy payable in 2019. Again, this is as has been talked about over the past few months, most recently at the truth and taxation hearing. So a total property tax levy of $4,183,985, and that's an increase of $94,985 over the 2018 property tax levy, or a 2.32% increase. And again, no changes, as you reaffirm the pool closing to that number that's been talked about and it's kind of figured out at the budget workshop prior to truth and taxation at the end of November. So again, no changes with that 2.32% increase to the levy.
Anyone have any questions or comments? I know we've been beating on these numbers for a while, but I think from my standpoint, I think we've done another, the staff and the council have done another great job of really looking at how we spend money for the taxpayers. And I think that we've shown again, I think Mike had it over the last 10 years, we were at 2.05%, and to keep it at that range is pretty admirable, I think, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for the 18 property tax levy payable in 2019.
Got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Sean Ryan. If there's any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next, movement of the compensation. I assume this is a 3%?
It was a 3% that was in the budget for 2019 through the compensation plan. Just to give a little background for Bruce, and maybe Mike already filled in on this, but we have a compensation plan based on classification of our positions in the city. You can see on the document on the back of that, it shows all positions, what their pay grade is, and then a nine-step plan that employees can move through. So this is just for the 3% cost of living adjustment for 2019 as included in the budget.
Any questions?
Just a clarification, we don't actually have a cost of living adjustment policy. This is just a month that the city council.
It is a month that the council discusses.
And in the last few years, Bruce, we've kind of mirrored the police union contract, so all city employees can get the same amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Now, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the compensation. Okay.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. If there's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Moving right along. Ken, fees?
Yep, so the close 2019 fee schedule, as you have in the packet, would be supposed to take effect on January 1, 2019. We don't have a whole lot of changes on here this year. The main points to make are softball and baseball league and youth team fees. We have not raised those in over 10 years. Our board talked through the course of the year and ultimately made a recommendation at the December meeting to do what would amount to approximately a tad over a 15% across-the-board increase. Basically, it's a little more than 15% to make that these even numbers rounded them up. And so those are the team fees in there, hopefully not significant for anybody's bottom line, but 10 years of no changes, we feel it was appropriate to do that with our fees that have continued to increase for our maintenance and labor costs, to keep those fields up.
And Ken, you may state that, you know, that doesn't mean that we're going to be breaking even, even on the cost.
Yeah, we've had 60% cost increases in our maintenance of our upkeeps over the past 10 years, and yeah, we're nowhere near breaking even on that. We're just trying to cover our costs a little better for the team fees. So we still feel it's good value for the teams that do play. And hope that we can continue to make improvements on them as well. That helps, helps it out. Storm sewer base rate shows an increase of 3.5% to that base fee. And a little more background on that, there's essentially a residential occupancy factor multiplier times the property's acreage that is added on to that, depending if it's a commercial or industrial property. Single-family homes are charged 1/3 of an acre, which is why the base fee had been $5 out of that base rate, which has been 15, pay 1/3 of that. So that will increase by 3.5% across the board for everybody. And then finally, I'm not even going to try to cover all these, but if you have any questions, Bruce, Ryan, or can answer on the electric and water fee changes. Basically, 3% increase in the rate for our water fee charges. And then there's a new multi-dwelling unit base fee that is kind of a new fee, and Bruce can give a little more detail on that if you'd like that. Electric, no changes in the rates at this time, but utility commission is doing a rate study, so might be back in early 2019, but electric rate increases potentially. And then finally, there are some new programs that the utilities are offering for summer winter rate and other type programs that are listed on the fee schedule as new. And again, if you have any questions, hopefully Bruce can answer those. But ultimately, as we do every year, we do a resolution that would be up for consideration to approve those fees to be effective on January 1st.
Bruce, can you get up and just speak real quickly on it, just for the people that may watch it? I mean, I know we discussed a lot in our budget meetings and stuff, but maybe it'd be helpful for them.
Quickly, I'll just go over some of the changes that we have. Overall, on the water side, we have a 3% rate increase in this across the board, both the rates and the service fees. In regards to the electric fees, we made no changes on the electric side this year, although we are going through a rate study currently, and actually, that's going to be presented to the commission here this month. And pending the outcome of that, we may have to true up some of our rate schedules. No overall rate increases due to trying to raise revenues, just to true up our rate classes. So that would make sure each category is paying their fair share to our order rates. Other than that, we are offering, and this is in part due to the service territories that we've made over the past year, we're going to start offering some more services to gain better control of customer services, both mainly that are being installed either by the customer or the developer. The utility is going to start doing that work, and therefore, we put charges in to do that, so that we can gain some control and some consistency over them programs, so that they're put into our standards that Craig has developed. So those are pretty much the part in regards to the customer service and the developer rates for installation of new services and/or developments. And do you have any other questions?
Thanks, Bruce.
Anyone have any questions to the 2019 proposed fee schedule?
I always seem to have questions. Ken, am I, just to verify, just that items highlighted in yellow have changes, or are there any other areas that change?
Only items that are changing are the ones that are highlighted in yellow, and they'll show the proposed 20, it should be, say 2019 fee, I see this is 2018 fee on there. But then it shows the reason for the change. So anything that's not highlighted is not proposed.
Okay, and this is just from my own education. Do we rent out our equipment very often?
I don't know how often we charge for our.
Well, it would depend on if something going on, if a contractor comes to town and he meets assistants in installing a service line or something like that, and we're available, they'll ask us to go up to, I'll say with the jet or truck, and we'll help them out, and then we'll charge them rent on it. Does it happen very often? Twice a year, three times a year? No, so it does not happen very often.
I guess this is my general comment, police reserve too, do we run into a lot of that where we are providing, I think, back to the park, Walraven days, you always have a policeman there, but do we have that very often where we're?
Actual police reserve, we don't have an active unit right now. It's remained on the fee schedule. I think if, well, like we used to do Mill Watch and various things with our police reserve.
Okay, police officer with car. Is that what happens?
Yeah, we have, in the last year and a half now, we've done a lot of escorts for chart when they move tanks out. They used to go through the state patrol. They just found it easier to work with local police. So we've been doing a lot of that. We also do security at Bra's Hotel. If they are having an event and alcohol is being served, it's their policy, they would have law enforcement there for some of that. So we're doing more of that right now.
I'm not suggesting any changes, but just to consider in the future to adjust them annually, whenever, because we're obviously changing wages, and if wages do change every year, our costs, we're eating the increase on some of these third-party type of transactions. And so that would be an example, plus the equipment and other costs to us.
Yeah, we did talk about looking at our labor rates and equipment rates, and felt that they're still covering our costs and our trouble to do that at this point, so.
So you don't want salary increase then?
No, we do. What we're charging out is still adequately covered.
Just a point of clarification too, if the utilities commission makes changes to any of the rates, then I'll come back with the amended fee schedule for that portion of it, and that'll be presented to the council at that time.
And I believe, Ken, you also occasion do a study on some of these permits and hookup things on a regular basis?
We do, and I think we'll be back as we talk about the new rental registration program. We'll have some new fees for that. And yeah, occasion, we will take a look at just any of our 90s fees. Typically, try to do them at the beginning of the year, but you know, throughout the course of the year, if things need to change, we'll bring it back to the council.
Thank you.
Ken, any other questions? Okay, I guess not, I guess I'll look for our motion to approve the resolution for the 2019 fees. So, I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Kaye Wilcox. If there's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next. Glenn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In front of you, we got the closeout of Memorial Park Baseball Field improvements from 2017, as you heard Mike Sneaker and Jerry Clumbick talk about. This project started in the late, in the fall of 2017, included the plaza area for fans, new dugouts, press blocks, new light poles, backstop and denny, a number of other parts of that project that got completed. Substantial completion on the project was August 16th, 2018. On a project like this, you will have a one-year warranty. So warranty started on substantial completion and will go till August 16th, 2019. We did do a walk-through of the area, everything was in really good shape, as we will in most construction projects, wait through a winter, a freeze, and thaw, see if something changes, and that's where our warranty period would come into effect. At this point, we know of nothing that needs to be done. Next spring, hopefully, you will not show us anything, but that's the time to look for it again. So that's what we do on a project like this. All the final lien waivers from all the subcontractors have been turned in, so it's a recommendation the city council approve, the attached resolution approving the project closeout for the New Prague Memorial Park Baseball Field.
Any questions? Guess I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to close out the baseball field improvements.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. If there's any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Yeah, passes five zero. You're still on the stage, Glenn.
I am, I am. Next thing in your packet is approving a new hire at the wastewater treatment plant. This would be replacing the existing position of an employee that was offered a position at the Med Council wastewater plant. So he took that, and so we'd have to fill that spot, which makes it four full-time employees at the wastewater plant. On October 16th, we started advertising for the wastewater one position. Wastewater one position does not need a wastewater license to get into the position, because we feel that that position, or this one that we're filling, as John's position was also, was more of a mechanic, more of a maintenance guy, and I don't mean maintenance as far as taking care of building. It's taking care of pumps, the electronics, the HVAC system, the PLCs or logic controllers throughout the whole system. So that's why it's a wastewater one position. The nice thing in a wastewater one position is they have to get a Class D wastewater license within two years of being hired, which is not a problem. A Class D is the smallest license or the lowest license, you need to be a wastewater operator, and it just takes more hands-on experience than it does education or any kind of lengthy schooling to get that license. And then you can work your way up from there. So this is filling a wastewater one. Again, October 16th, we started advertising for applicants. We received nine of them. After going through all nine of them, what we have is a pointing system. By their qualifications, we give them points. There's three of us that do that. We came up with four applicants that we wanted to interview personally. After interviewing those four applicants, we made a recommendation to Mike that we would, we should offer the job to Mr. Robert Vazina. Robert Vazina currently resides in New Prague, currently works for Camry as a maintenance technician, I think is his title there. Again, working on pumps, motors, HVAC, PLCs, pretty much mirroring what we got at the wastewater plant. Before that, he worked 20 years at Scott Equipment as a fabricator and a welder for Scott. Like I said, a wastewater one does not need a license to apply for that position. We're looking for more kind of the mechanical end of it, and we'll teach you how to be a wastewater operator. So it's, we're asking the council and the mayor to review and appoint Mr. Robert Vazina to the wastewater one position with an effective starting date of January 2nd, 2019, with an initial starting wage of 2727 per hour, which is off to 2018 pace. The one thing that I had on here that I did not know when I was writing this memo, he passed all his criminal background check, employment, physical exam, alcohol test. We did not have the drug test back yet, but that came back and everything's good to go. So since I wrote this memo, that result has come back. So again, recommendation from staff to appoint Mr. Robert Vazina to a wastewater one position.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve to wastewater one.
Okay. Got a second. A motion by Sean Ryan, second by Kaye Wilcox, to approve the appointment of Robert Vazina as wastewater one operator. So if there's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you. I'm the mayor of council. Next on the agenda is just a joint powers agreement with the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force.
Force. Just looking to renew that agreement and Patty said I only have two minutes, so.
Is she kicking again? Her foot's moving quite a bit down there, right?
We have belonged to the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force for three full years and about three and a half now. We started two thousand fifteen in June or July since then. So each year, the state auditor wants them to renew a joint powers agreement. So that's what I'm here, asking the council to entertain, to enter in once again to a joint powers agreement for two thousand nineteen. The working relationship with the Drug Task Force has always been very good. This year, during the budgeting process, we've belonged to two Drug Task Force because of the county line here. I, along with, are talking with Mike, we wanted to move those funds that we were using from forfeiture funds each year into the actual police budget. So we pay five thousand to LeSour and Rice County Drug Task Force and then the amount to Southwest is forty-two hundred. But it is a good investment in that working relationship and what they're able to offer generally felony level drug or drug trafficking type charges. So I asked the council to entertain entering into this joint powers agreement once again for two thousand fifteen.
All right, do we, are we gonna also have to approve one for Cannon?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if they...
Yeah.
As of now?
Evidently, they have different ideas.
Okay. Any other questions for...
I have a couple.
Sure.
So there be another one coming future for LeSour County?
I'm not sure if they... We did one in two thousand seventeen and at that time, we did, well, as a council and my recommendation was we join them for two years, see how it unfolds. I would, I would say I would want to renew that one also again, and that's why I moved the money into the budget for nineteen.
Okay.
But I don't necessarily know that they're gonna redo it, I didn't agree with that.
Then I just want to make sure I understand the memo. This agreement allows anyone in this task force to have the same ability, Hennepin County Sheriff is an example, can do anything if we're giving them the ability to do anything in the city of New Prague jurisdiction, whether it's Durham Drug Task Force related or not.
Well, it gives them powers of arrest, but specifically their duties are to investigate drug and drug trafficking crimes. So it'd be difficult to limit their abilities to say, hey, when you come to town, you can only arrest for felony level drugs. They have the powers of arrest to be able to carry out their mission for the task force.
So then, just to clarify for myself again, if the Hennepin County Deputy Sheriff that's not on the task force, do they have the same ability as a person that's on the task force to do that activity in this city in this new province?
It would be...
Would you, as an example, not being on the task force, be able to do something in Hennepin County?
It would depend on what that is.
So it's not carte blanche?
No.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand what...
Yeah, my jurisdiction is the city of New Prague. That's generally where my jurisdiction stops.
The task force members have jurisdiction all over these counties?
Within these counties because of these agreements.
Okay.
That gives them that authority.
And then I'm just wondering what, have you felt there's been accomplishments this year with this task force and you feel good about it?
Yeah. Each of them, they kind of ping pong back and forth depending on where their investigation's taken, but this year, we saw three investigations here in New Prague from LeSour County Task Force. Last year, we saw a felony arrest here for an individual that was manufacturing meth in the city of New Prague. So yeah, the task force kind of bounce back and forth. And South Metro's specifically, a lot of their investigations do take them north into the metro area, but we share information with both task force individuals. Any information that an officer might come upon about drug information or drug investigation based off a traffic stop or something else, it's passed on and a lot of times, they're aware of the names already, but we just kind of share that information. And then that can lead to maybe, maybe even a small-time dealer level where they are in, getting in and make a buy from that person and then are able to work that back up to a higher level person.
Okay, thank you. Didn't mean to take up all your two minutes.
That wasn't mine, that was yours.
Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force joint powers agreement. Second. Got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Dave Bruchek. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, number eleven. Got a couple things we want to talk about here on number eleven. One is first, I want to thank Kay Wilcox for stepping in the last six months, filling out Amy Jerick's term after she resigned. Kay was, served the council and the citizens of New Prague for over twenty-one years as a councilperson, and I really appreciate her stepping forward and filling the spot for us because it was, it's not an easy thing to do. I'm sure she probably enjoyed the private life and not deal with the headaches, but she really did step in admirable and I know when the spot opened up, her name came up to the top of the list because of her dedication to the community and also we knew that Kay would always become, come to the meetings very well-prepared and have good input in on our decisions. So Kay, on behalf of the city of New Prague, I want to thank you for filling that position and you know, maybe down the line, you might get asked again, but I really do appreciate.
I enjoyed the opportunity and I was hesitant to come in because they always say you can't go home and I just loved the first twenty-one years. So that, oh, I don't know, different people, I don't know. Staff is still the same, so I still, I just love you guys, but it's been very rewarding. And since I retired from nursing in nineteen seventy-six, Mike was happy I would get to my retirement. Have another six months.
Okay, thank you. Well, the second recognition is Councilman Bruchek. This is his last official meeting. This is his second stint as a councilperson. He did it from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-nine and then January nineteen ninety to August nineteen ninety. And with his current, was it eight years that you served? I think you and I came on board at the same time?
Three, actually.
Has served approximately now just twelve years and eight months, the service of the city. I personally want to thank Dave. You know, Dave's a little older than I am, but I knew more of his younger brothers than Dave, but I got to know Dave pretty well at this time and I've always respected his opinion on things. Sometimes it's a little feistier than maybe I am, but it kind of, it does add a distinct flavor to the council and I know the citizens of New Prague, not only thank you for your service previously, but these last eight years, you've been involved as the city has come out of some tough economic times to where we are a very strong, stable city and you should be very proud that you were instrumental in helping us, guiding us through those times. I think Barb?
Yes.
Do I have a presentation for me?
Please do.
Dave, I'm gonna give you the key to the city. It doesn't work anywhere.
I know, it's that kind of big.
But I hope you take this and recognize that this key is given to you in great respect and honor for the work you've done for the city of New Prague.
Thank you very much.
As I said, you only have two minutes.
I'd like to thank everybody for putting up with some of my comments, especially some of the staff. I was a little hard on Glenn at times. It was all in good fun, but I enjoyed this past eight years. It was hard sometimes, but I learned so much about the goings-on in New Prague. I think I learned more than I gave, in fact, I know I did. I really appreciate the knowledge and the kindness of all the staff here. I've said this privately sometimes to my wife and a few other people that, you know, Tony Mike and the other city employees, especially the staff, they could run this city without the need of a council. They're so informed, they always look for the best, what they can do for the city and its staff or its residents. So I'm the one that needs to be thankful for their service. Mine is insignificant compared to what they all do. And I really think we've got a wonderful staff here and have been blessed, I guess, to work with all the council members that I have been on these councils that I've been on, so thank you all for your kindness and kindness to me. Amen.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, issues, comments on any items on the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
Go on, all of you. Please, Lord.
There are three of the four minutes. The first one is November twenty-sixth. Unless I'm reading this wrong, on the first page, it's actually page ten ninety-one, third paragraph, and I think maybe Bruce Frimbers can clarify this more than I can. The last, second last sentence in that paragraph, "The board is also proposing to phase in a base rate fee in multifamily dwellings as more exists now." Should be more or less, or none rather.
None.
None. That's the only change I have on that. On December third, the meeting is... Page ten ninety-four, the second page, very last sentence. This is just a wording issue. I don't know if on the last sentence there, the needs to be in there. To me, it sounded better to work not there, but I'll leave that up to Barbara.
I would be happy if we could change.
Okay. On the next page, ten ninety-five, the first sentence, "The history of this roadway," quotation marks, didn't we just have roadway depleted? Nineteen ninety, Orland Project that added the truck extensions and brick wall bar. To me, that doesn't read right. I had to read that over three or four times before I thought I understood it. You might want to just, can look at that and see if there's different wording. Page ten ninety-six, it was in the middle paragraph, starts with any opportunity to make changes. The next sentence, Brent Pash, Minda Traffic Engineer, explained that Minda has taken a detailed looked at. Shouldn't it just be look? I realize these are insignificant ones.
I'm gonna send you the minutes to go on and you can proof them for me.
Let's show you my brother.
Glad he wasn't English.
Yeah. Page ten ninety-eight, second last paragraph, kind of the same thing. The second line, be, be being led by the city. I don't, I think that should be is being led by the city.
Is that Dave?
The second...
As a reminder?
As a reminder, it should be noted that the project design and planning being, I think that should is being led by the city of New Prague.
We're gonna blame Mike, he's not here.
Okay, blame Mike. The second last one I have is, "At that meeting, both Sean and I commented on the access of Fahy and Minas and requested," I think we requested by a motion, did we not?
No, you guys, you guys started by a motion, but you were doing that in the public hearing.
Oh, that's true.
So we curtained that back and then we just made a recommendation. We didn't actually do a formal motion.
Okay. Then that probably doesn't need to be in there. You're right. Okay. Ignore that.
I gotta keep my eyes out here.
Thanks. Take a chat. And then on the last one, now the last one is a point of order, I guess. It's on the December twelfth, eleven oh-three hearing, they have somebody, Mayor Nicolai attempted to call a special meeting to order. Really wasn't done that way, that was done because Mr. Riggs recommended that that meeting be noted as a special meeting. So it's just...
Or I can just say Mayor Nicolai called for the special meeting to order.
Because you did call it to order.
Yeah. We didn't attempt, we actually did.
Sounds good.
That's it. No more.
I have a quick question on that too, just a can of the commercial refuse caller.
Yeah.
Did we, does waste man, man always, have you done that license before?
Commercially, yes.
Oh, commercially, okay, all right, but other than that, they can have the residential?
We have not had any other residential hauler request for our residential. And that's kind of a topic in our quotes as we reach seven thousand people. That is open to debate, but we made that formal request.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? I do. The only thing I have is on boards and commissions. Rick, you have a homework assignment. Can you email me your request, which ones in a preferential order? Maggie, you're already done. Bruce, I would like the same on you, which board and commissions you're interested in, and Sean also. And if I can get those by the end of the year, so we can make the appointments in that first meeting in January. You guys are all so trying to do that, I greatly appreciate it. I don't have any other comments on the consent agenda. Anyone else? Guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Dave Bruchek. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the corrections that were noted? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Aye. Miscellaneous. This is the fun time. Anyone have, Mitch, you good? Rick? Patrick?
I'm fine.
You like the new seating order back there?
A little larger.
You look a little smaller back there.
Hey, we're gonna put you in the next room.
Yeah. Jim?
Just, we are moving through our hiring process and on Wednesday, we have phone interviews with twenty candidates set up right now.
Okay, good. Bruce? Glenn?
I've got nothing.
Patty?
Oh.
Ken?
Nope.
Scott?
Nope.
Barb?
Nope, Merry Christmas.
Okay. Bruce, you want anything, any comments?
I guess not. I'm kind of a quiet individual anyway.
Bruce?
Just a couple things. Congrats, Ken, you're first lead in the meeting, I think.
I've done a few others.
Okay. Well, with me... Well, with me here, anybody who's a person, congratulations. I'm so new to this, I have no idea if a government shutdown occurs on Friday, does it affect the city of New Prague in any way? Is there any federal funding that will be stalled or stopped or cash flow occur? But just to think about that, if there is something.
Wouldn't think it would have any immediate impact on us, no. Something unthinkable.
I attended the scale meeting Friday, if anybody has an interest in that information. What was covered was mostly lobbyist information, what to work on at the state legislature. So that was most of that meeting. I want to also personally thank and congratulate Dave and Kay and I think the city of New Prague was well served by their work over the years and I obviously know them well and they are great citizens of the city and really care very much about us. Thank you.
Kay?
I just have one further thing. I don't know, did anybody recognize any irony in any of the votes tonight? You called me back here to vote yes on closing the pool. I knew it was strategic.
And Kay, I think the last years when we turned it down, you had a request that you would like the.
I would, the place that people built.
Yes, the place that plaques. So Glenn, if you could be so kind, you know, tomorrow morning at 6:00 in the morning when it's cold out there.
Right after breakfast, I'm hoping, is there anything we can have on the Tuesday?
I think that would be appropriate that Kay would be, they get the plaque.
That pool never got built without Kay Wilcox.
Well, we know that. We know that. So we really do appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
David, you got anything else to say?
Yeah, I have two things. As you know, I was part of the representative, I was a representative for the New Prague Area Community Center. And at our last meeting, which was December 7th, it was kind of an interesting meeting actually, because they talked about, they were putting in a new closed circuit TV to film or to record all of the activities at the community center, HobbyLink. It's, the one that they have is called Live Barn, L-I-V-E-B-A-R-N. It's one that will have a large screen TV in the lobby area. It is a non-cost to the community club center. It is funded by Live Barn. They're doing all of the payment for the, Stacey Electric, put up all the cables. They will have, as I understand it, one TV centered strategically so it will record all of the activities going on during a game, a practice or whatever, as determined by the board and most specifically, I think Kevin Katske. It's paid for by subscriptions by people in New Prague or the surrounding area that want to watch this. So there's no cost to the community center nor to the city of New Prague. The other topic that they talked about paramount, and I mentioned before, is they want badly to put in a second sheet of ice. Feasibility study probably is in their hands now and they will, excuse me, be bringing that to the city council probably in February. And I don't know if they'll be asking for any money. I don't think that's going to be on their agenda just yet, but it probably will be down the road. When's it going to be done? If done, I have no idea, nor do they. The other topic I have is the senior lake area water and sanitary sewer district. They have a website up that is available to anybody to watch it. That was started about a year ago. They are planning on reviewing the contract that they have with the city. They have talked about this, most of the time I've been on the board or the district board. They don't know what needs to be changed. They've gone to their legal department or company and asked about it. That was over six months ago. They haven't heard a boom from the lawyers yet. In fact, Art Juan called them the day before the meeting and asked about it and he got met with kind of no comment, as if they didn't know what he was talking about that. And there's been two other items that they have queried their lawyers about for at least two months and have gotten no response. So I asked Art, you know, Art, I said, do you have any reservations about the law firm that you have? He said, as a matter of fact, yes. So Barb Weckman Breck, Barb Weckman Breckie and I both came up with an idea for them and a few minutes later, we both came to the realization that the firm that we could recommend to them is the firm that we have. And so he says, well, that might be a area of, I'm looking for the right word, of contract of interest. Thank you. So, or I told him, I'll try to come up with some names for you or if you do decide on our firm, what kind of contracts might they have? The other area is one that I kind of asked Scott County to do before they got them back on board two years ago, almost two years ago now, is that when Scott County was supposed to put forth two names, two representatives that would be on the board directors for this district. For many, many years, they didn't have their seven names to run that board. They only had five. So they came up recent, more recently with the two commissioners, Tom Wolf and Barb Weckman Breckie. Well, the Scott County Commissioners has been talking about this now and they've decided that starting in 2019, they're going to have one commissioner and they're going to have a Scott County staff person be the second one. The reason for that has been many times during the meetings that they came up with legal questions, building code issues, drain field issues, any number of issues that two commissioners couldn't answer. So they had to go back to the staff to ask questions. So now what they're going to do is have one commissioner and one staff member, which I think is going to be a big improvement. We won't have to go back to ask so many questions or they won't have to. That's what has happened in that, both of those groups. And so I'm done.
Okay, well, I appreciate the update and whoever gets appointed to those commissions may have some questions with you, David, and I know he'll be willing to sit down over a cup of coffee and bring anyone up to us. Right, so thank you very much. Sean, anything?
I just want to say thank you and goodbye to Kay and David. It's a small town, I'm sure I'll run into you, I've seen you quite a bit, so, but this is the next one of the jobs. I appreciate everything that you guys did and it's going to be, it'll be different than eight years sitting next to you, David. I think you should.
Okay, I guess the only I have is wish everyone a happy holiday season, be safe out there and with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposition? We're out of here. Thank you, everyone.